We're just.
The United States of America.
Diane, are we good? Excellent. All right. Thank you all for coming tonight. We are missing the chair. Mallory is away from it, so I will take her place. First order of business this morning is approval of the town council public hearing minutes from people by twenty twenty four.
Vice Chairman James motion to approve the F Y twenty five public budget public hearing on four nine twenty four.
Second. All right, we have to be in motion in a second. Any comments? Are you good? All right, Jeff. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
I vote aye. Motion passes four zero. Next, the order of business is the town council meeting minute from four nine twenty four.
Vice Chairman James, a motion to approve the town council minutes from four nine twenty four. Second.
Motion in a second. Do we have any changes?
I just had a couple grammatical questions, maybe, and I'm sure it was just on Tyian's. Fingers were probably not working as fast as her brain was. Under the library section. Oh, never mind that. I read that wrong the first time. It was on the the Recreation Senior Center, and this might have been how I read it. It says, the seniors enjoying Easter dinner and entertainment on May twenty seventh. And then it said it was a lunch and learn regarding Medicare. Was the Easter dinner a lunch and learn regarding Medicare? Or I think you might have just missed they there was another date where they got together, maybe?
I'm going to say that I probably forgot that second date, and I will go and amend that.
So would you like to amend your motion? You picked the corrections.
A motion to approve the town council minutes from four nine twenty four with amendments. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, move to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Vote aye also. Motion passes four zero. Moving on to the treasurer's warrant. I will make the motion to approve the treasurer's warrant in the amount of three hundred and seventy five thousand eight hundred and seventy two dollars and eighty five cents dated four seventeen twenty twenty four.
Second.
There were motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Vote aye also. Warment passes four zero. Moving on to reports and presentations. First will be an update from Oak Point Associates. Good evening, Peter.
Good evening. Again, I'm Peter Matt Gavry with Oak Point Associates, where the A and E has been hired to do the project for the renovation of this building. Not a lot to report from my last visit, an update. We have had our electrical engineer and our mechanical engineer come on site. We're still in the information gathering stage. We've also going to be setting up some regularly regularly scheduled meetings with the town, the building staff to just start going over where what we found, but we're still, like I said, in the information gathering stage right now. Any question?
Any questions? Fantastic. You good?
Yeah. Only that we have our first meeting scheduled tomorrow at ten. And I will, I I reach out to the vice chair, we'll be rotating invitations for two of you at a time to come to those meetings. To see what we're working on and basically it's just, we're going to be a conduit to answer intricate questions like workshopping kind of stuff to help them move the property forward. I would say it has to go to you and get all approved. But in an effort to not bog down all your time here at meetings, which is going to do a little site meetings weekly. And then we'll have better stuff to present to you.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chairman, can I just make a quick comment?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to clarify something with this process with the renovation of the potential renovation of the town hall and what Oak Point is doing. There is a misperception with a few people in town that they are assuming that we actually are that we voted on renovating the town hall and that a new build is off of the table. So I just wanted to clarify that this is a process that we decided to go through because the information that we received from Port City was just not enough with an adequate estimate for the potential restoration or renovation of this building. So this is just another step in the process of getting to the vote of whether we build new or if we renovate and restore this building. So I just wanted to clear that up because people are thanking the council for our step forward in renovating and a solid decision hasn't been made yet. So just wanted to.
Thank you. That's an important piece to have out there.
Mr. White, Mr. White Chair?
Yes, sir.
Acting Chair?
Yes.
May I also dispel a rumor and comment? Would you like to say what we found out today about next door? Just though we can dispel this rumor.
The code enforcement officer came to Tim and I and said that she had just come from Aroma Jones to get a coffee. And one of the girls asked her if it was true that we were buying their land and leveling the store subway in Aroma Jones. And I, we both looked at each other and we're like, well, this is the first we hear of it. And no, there isn't one talks of that at all.
So just while we're on dispelling rumors and trading things out, just wanted to let you know that and.
That's all. Thank you. I would have been upset if I heard that and not heard the plans of what we were doing. I appreciate that. Our next up for reports presentation is from the South River Conservation Commission talking about the open space plan. So we have Pat, Jane Brucki, and Karen. Great.
Karina.
Karina. I knew I was going to mess it up.
I'm Pat.
I know. Yes, I know Pat.
I'm always told I have to say my name. I'm Pat Robinson, Brown Street, and I'm here on Conservation Commission Business. And we have been working on updating the open space plan. We got a grant through the Piscataqua Regional S R S program and have hired Southern Main Regional Development Commission, whatever it's called, to to help us out with that. Karina, great, Raider has been working with us. And it's been Brett Cross, Dolores Leonard, and Jane Brucki. Jane and Brett are both on Conservation Commission and Dolores is a volunteer, a previous Conservation Mission member. So I'm going to have Karina do the presentation and we'll be back there to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you all for having me tonight. As Pat said, I'm Karina Greater. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator with the Southern Main Planning and Development Commission, or S M P D C. And I'm looking forward to providing you with an overview and a progress update on our efforts. We've been working to update the two thousand and twelve South Berwick Open Space Plan. And we are calling this Update South Berwick Outside. So I'm excited to share more with you. Next slide. Okay, so this will be pretty quick, but I wanted to give a little agenda of what we'll discuss tonight. We'll quickly review why we want to update the two thousand and twelve Open Space Plan. And then we'll go through what the process is, where we are at in our timeline. And I also wanted to share with you some drafts that we've created, or I would say that Conservation Commission has created for a definition of open space and some draft priorities that are guiding this planning process. And then I'll end with a quick explanation of what the next steps will be. So as Pat mentioned throughout, we're happy to answer questions or take questions at the end. Our goal for tonight is to have, help you all have a better understanding of what this process is and how it fits into the town's many other planning processes. And we hope to answer your questions about the process or the things, the draft materials that we're sharing. Next slide. Oh, perfect. You're ahead of me. Okay, so the two thousand and twelve Open Space Plan. This was a plan that S M P D C is our old name helped you all draft back in two thousand and twelve with the conservation, with actually a special open space committee at the time. It provides a great foundation of conservation of open space in South Berwick up until that point. It summarizes how South Berwick has worked regionally to promote conservation. And it had a whole survey process that included survey results that showed that conservation of open space was at that time of priority in the community. It outlined many goals and strategies to try and promote this conservation, and they fit into three focus areas. To increase the conservation of open space through funding and through partnerships, to maintain the current curved conserve areas and increase access and recreation opportunities in those open spaces. And then finally, to provide tools and information to town decision makers, such as the planning board or the town council. But twelve years later, there are many reasons why the Open Space Plan could use an update. First and foremost, South Berwick, you are all in a, in the final stages of creating and updating your new, your comprehensive plan. This plan includes many goals and strategies that do relate to open space and conservation. So that makes it a good time to review this original open space plan. See if there are ways that we can make sure that the Open Space Plan supports and complements the updated comprehensive plan. Second, much has changed in South Berwick in twelve years. You're seeing more development and also the region is seeing changing climate and weather patterns. So the comprehensive plan update included a survey to gauge the priorities of community members about the future facing these challenges. And in that survey, over eighty six percent of respondents said open space and wildlife areas were a priority. And in fact, sixty percent of respondents said that it was very important to preserve open space and wildlife. And then additionally, in another question, respondents agreed that preserving rural character and maintaining open space were among the town's most serious challenges over the next five years. So not only is it important, but it's going to be a challenge to achieve it. So the third reason for an update is the need for new, better tools. The two thousand and twelve plan is just a PDF. The maps are not updatable. The data is not manipulatable. If that's a word. And so to improve upon that, the new plan will include a G I S dashboard or a mapping tool that can be used by the town council, planning board, property owners to support the review of development applications or other land-based decisions in the community. And then finally, there is just new science and data available that will be helpful to incorporate. In particular, this plan incorporates new data on agricultural lands and climate impacts, which were not a part of the two thousand and twelve plan. Next slide. So I apologize, this font is really small, but hopefully you can see it in your packets. This is a pathway graphic that shows the timeline for this planning process. We started in fall twenty twenty three in that upper right-hand corner preparing to plan after we got the grant funding through on the Piscataqua Regional Estuary Partnership. Once we got that grant funding, we did a lot of background research, looked at the old plan, started coordinating with the folks who are working on the comprehensive plan updates and collecting all the geospatial and other data needed to inform the plan. We're now in this process of developing the plan itself. First, we came up with a draft definition of open space in South Berwick. And we drafted priorities to guide the plan. We're beginning engagement with the town council and other groups in the community. And soon we'll be starting to draft goals and strategies. We're also beginning to start into that third phase of strengthening the plan where we're actually drafting certain sections of it. And we've created the first version of the online mapping tool that will eventually be published and usable by the public. And as we've been working on that, the folks on the Conservation Commission have been working on the Conservation Checklist, which will be a tool for the planning board or folks or property developers to use to understand the conservation priorities that might impact different areas of the community or the properties that they're looking at. So we'll wrap up this process by the end of two thousand and twenty four when we finalize the plan, which we plan to share with you all and the planning board and the public. We plan to publish the mapping tool and the Conservation Checklist. And we'll also wrap up this planning process by engaging with students in the South Berwick schools. We're hoping that we can use the plan and the mapping tool for environmental and data science education. So our ultimate goal is to create a plan that is very usable across the whole community, not just for conservation experts. So I'd like to, through this last part of our presentation, share with you some of the draft materials we've created. First is the draft definition of open space. Our goal in creating this definition was to create one that is both inclusive of all the different types of open space in South Berwick and one that emphasizes community values about open space. So we gave the Conservation Commission some examples and then they drafted this definition. And I'll share it now. So open space is the constellation of undeveloped and lightly developed areas that keep South Berwick healthy and thriving. Open spaces occur on public and private lands and within developments. They encompass nature preserves, farms and forests, rivers and ponds, shorelines and trails, undeveloped land, and public parks and recreation areas. Together, these places provide a home for wildlife, help ensure clean water, enhance our economy and create recreational opportunities for everyone. Most of all, open space is a reflection of our collective commitment to preserve the lifestyles, livelihoods, and landscapes that make our town unique for future generations. One. And then next are the draft plan priorities. So the, these go into a bit more detail as to why South Berwick wants to conserve and enhance open space. I put these them all together here on this slide, but then there's a accompanying description for each one that we'll go through in the following slides. So they're clean water, thriving wildlife, resilience to change, healthy community, and growing our economy. And then to go through each of those, clean water is to maintain or improve the quality of running water through our aquifers, rivers, and ponds to support clean drinking water, opportunities for recreation, and healthy aquatic habitats. Next, thriving wildlife is protect habitat, ensure safe passage along waterways and roads, and enhance the diversity of our wildlife, including sensitive species. Third, resilience to change. So as our climate warms and storms become more extreme, reduce the risk of flooding and erosion, protect against fires, alleviate the impacts of drought, and provide for shade and cooling. For more healthy community, so increase opportunities for year-round recreation, public gathering in places with scenic beauty and cultural importance, and shade and cooling. And then finally, growing our economy, support local businesses by attracting more visitors and supporting the sustainable use of open space for farming, hunting, fishing, and timber production. And I'll end with next steps. So now that we've drafted a shared definition of open space and priorities for what the plan will try to focus on, our next steps are to draft goals and strategies. We're in the process of doing this now, and they'll be based on a synthesis of information and data from many sources to make sure that they're relevant to the other planning processes going on in the community. So we'll use our mapping tool to identify focus areas based on the priorities that we've just described. We'll also incorporate the goals and strategies from other local planning efforts, including the comprehensive plan update, but also other things like the downtown revitalization plan and the Eastern Trail feasibility study. All of those intersect with open space. And lastly, we'll coordinate with regional partners to ensure that conservation efforts in South Berwick are incorporated and take advantage of conservation efforts in the broader Southern Main Region. Important to note that S M P D C is also working with Elliot and Berwick on open space plans at the same time. So we've been coordinating these efforts across the three towns and we plan to, once everyone's at the strategy phase, get the towns together to share their individual goals and strategies and identify some opportunities for working together. And also, as part of South Berwick's planning process, we're working hand in hand with Great Works Regional Land Trust and the Piscataqua Regional Estuaries Partnership throughout the entire planning process. So that's it. I know that was a quick overview. Thank you all so much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions or have the Conservation Commission folks come up and answer questions. But you're also welcome to contact me anytime. My email is on the slide. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any council member have questions, comments?
I just have a, you know, I really appreciate this and sitting on that comprehensive plan committee. I know that we've been speaking about your plan. We're really looking forward to seeing all goals aligned between all of these reports that we spent so much time in. I'm really keen on kind of how we'll be presenting this information to the public because I feel as though there needs to be a greater transparency for all of our efforts within the community. So whatever we can do to facilitate information of the public will be appreciated.
Yeah, definitely. I'm happy to let the folks who are leading the public engagement a bit more. I know we've been working on developing some plans for that. First step is we made the really nice handout with the help of Dolores. Dolores has her own communications firm, Roca Communications, and she's been volunteering the time of that to make sure that the plan and all the materials we create are really understandable to the general public because we don't want any folks to read things or see things and say, oh, that jargon is not for me. But certainly more efforts to involve folks along the way, are on the way.
Just saying thank you to for your help and the Conservation Commission, really great job. Kind of inspiring about the definition. I enjoyed the work. I probably went into just getting that definition kind of bow it down. So nice to see the committee kind of coming together and working with you and really coming up with some really good work. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
I just, again, I'd like to thank you. Thank you, everybody on the committee. As Pat knows, I've always been a big supporter of this. I like the diverse uses of the property we have. It does open it to everybody, no matter what you want to do, whether you want to hike, fish, go look at birds, hunt, whatever you want to do. And I truly appreciate that growing up here. There used to be a lot more land we could do that on. So every eight year we save, I'm all for. So thank you.
Definitely. Yes, you're welcome. Thanks.
All right, moving on, we have public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda tonight? Please step forward and identify yourself, ma'am.
Tamara Steinhauer, Hill Drive. I just, I just want to be sure. Going back a couple of meetings ago, I think you appro, you agreed to appropriate money for childcare and refreshments for the revitalization meeting because it was determined it would be, you know, great public use of funds for everyone to go. Have you considered doing that for town meeting, which I think would actually be really important for people to come to? That was one question. And the the funds that are being used for the revitalization, that's not coming from the undesignated fund, correct?
No, that is not. That is coming from the tip on directly.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And thank you. That's a fantastic suggestion for the town meeting. I'd love to see more people here.
Yeah.
So.
But thanks.
Pat?
Pat Robinson, my Conservation Commission hat on again. I just want to remind people about the well water testing that Nelson Analytical gives the town a discount and the pickup. The kits are available down in the hallway here and the pickup, the drop-off day. For them to come pick it up is May eighth between seven AM and twelve. So and they, let's just pick up the kit. Read the instructions on the kit and drop them off with the money, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else in the audience?
I have a comment, but it's related to the open space plan. I don't know if it's appropriate to save an hour.
No, just say that. Oh, we did. Please come forward. Sorry. I'm looking down and it was up. So no, we're all good.
Hello, Dolores Leonard to Old Fields Road. Thank you so much for paying close attention to Karina's presentation. As a person who's been supporting this project and also as a member of the community, I had a question for you all. And that is, there's a perception out there that the old open space plan was a little bit make it, put it on a shelf and it didn't get used a whole lot. So we're really interested in changing that narrative and creating a super useful tool for the community. So beyond the public engagement that Jessica encouraged. And the work that we plan to do to create this tool for the Planning Board and developers to use to reference the plan and the dashboard. Is there anything else that you as a council think we should be doing to set this up to be an actionable beneficial tool for the community? And I know that's a big question. You're still wrapping your brains around the presentation and all of that, but if I can just tuck it into your thinking and maybe you could get back to us on it or we could come back and talk about it.
I'd love to have you guys come back and give us a little bit of time to think on that.
Awesome. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online? I don't see any hands. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. First up is possible planning board appointments. We did interviews and had our discussions between council members and then. Inadvertently, we left it off the last town council meeting, so we have moved it to this one. We have two terms. One expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and the alternate seat term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I'm looking for motion to be agree one at a time.
Vice Chairman, before a motion is made, I just have a question because on our town website. It says that the vacant member as well as the vacant alternative. Alternate seat, sorry, is not, doesn't expire until twenty twenty six. And then my other concern is we're going to put somebody on the planning board and their term expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. And that's two months away. So I was just questioning the term expiration that's on the sheet that we would be making a motion to vote.
I am working on cleaning up the board's A committees. List. I found a few discrepancies. While working on them. As far as the term for the twenty twenty four, where I believe it was, and I could be wrong. Believe where it was a full seat already and someone resigned. It has to be filled for the term that it was being filled for and then they can go forward, be reappointed. For that thing, we just need a new vote.
June, we'd be voting again.
Correct. And I'm going to say that the type there is a paper on the agenda sheet is supposed to be created in weeks.
For the alternate? Thank you. Okay. Okay, with that. So I will entertain a motion. If anybody would like to make one for. Let's go for the full term seat question.
Vice Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Palazetti to a full member position. To the planning board with term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Vote aye also, motion passes four zero. Welcome aboard, Mr. Palazetti. Thank you. Excellent.
Vice Chairman, motion to appoint Mrs. Huzzy as the alternate. Position on the planning board for our term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We will move to vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from this one due to a close personal friendship with her for years. I will not disclose because it will tell your age. So motion passes three with one extension. Thank you, Mary, and welcome aboard. All right, moving on to new business. First order of new business is Odd Bell Tavern's liquor license renewal. I'll move to. Quite again, excuse me. I'll I'll move to make a motion to accept. Or approve the liquor license renewal for Odd Bell Tavern. Their business is good standing. There have been no issues reported thus. To the Chief of Police or the Fire Chief. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the liquor license? All the blocks are checked properly at this time.
Yes.
All right, hearing none, we'll move to the votes. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Vote aye also, motion passes four zero. Moving on, we have the fifty fifth annual professional municipal clerk's week proclamation. Tim, would you like to cover this one or?
Sure. So annually, May fifth through May eleventh. As the fifty fifth annual professional municipal clerk's week initiated nineteen sixty nine by the International.
Institute.
Institute of Municipal Clerks endorsed by all members of the United States. Can under fifteen other countries. The week is a time of celebration, reflection. On the importance of the clerk's office, we put Diana on our holders carrier on the hallway. It was a good, a good time for the event until she banged her head on the mantle and a doorway over there. Almost knocked her out. With that said, I would ask that the council approve the motion. To the proclamation and with that, that the council please read the motion and put it in the record.
Michelle, before we, no, I will read the proclamation. Fifty fourth annual professional municipal clerk's week. May fifteenth, May fifth to eleventh, twenty twenty four. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk. A time honored and vital part of the local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides professional link. Between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels and. Whereas professional, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality. Rendering equal services to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, we, South Berwick Town Council, do recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty four as Professional Municipal Clerk Week. And further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk. Diane, and I'm leaving it to Diane. First staff, Candice Thompson, Briella Ford and to all professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the. Communities they represent. Gated this day, twenty third day of April, twenty twenty four. Very impressive.
Thank you.
As you are. That's a lot. I did not realize it was one of the oldest. That's, that's excellent.
About that, if you don't mind, Vice Chair.
By all means.
The office of the town clerk started in England and they were known as the town remembering service.
Okay. Yes, I've probably been referred to her as the town remembering service at this point forward. So we have. I think she needs a hat. Okay, so moving forward, I would entertain a motion on this.
Motion to accept the fifty fifth annual professional municipal clerk's week proclamation.
Time to say here. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any surf any further discussion?
Do. Is it the fifty fourth or the fifty fifth? Fifty fifth, and I realized that I used the one from last year and I need to update. But it's the fifty fifth.
So I did say fifty fifth because that's the song. Is it's the fifty fifth?
Confirmation says fifty four. Sorry, I just got to pick that.
It's my big night. You're making me look bad.
I'm making myself look bad. I'm the one making the typos.
All right, we have a motion and a second and we will amend the proclamation to read fifty fifth.
Yes.
With no more discussion, go to the vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Vote aye also. Motion passes four zero.
You should probably read the proclamation again.
You don't want to say town professional clerk.
We're going to join the agenda for the first day of the week to reread it to everybody.
Okay, moving on, let's discuss the town hall roof because I certainly know there was a leak. Tim? Mr. Vice Chair, how did you know there was a leak? Unless you came here and saw it. I'm curious. And I think the public deserves to know that answer. The veterans yoga class, sir. Their yoga mats and other stuff were rained on prior to their class and we had to move them and remove them before their class. So it leaked in the upper area right there.
So yeah, and it apparently been leaking and apparently must come when the rain drives a certain position. And there is, you know, I don't know how much energy you love to do. We haven't done anything to leave this. I wanted to make you aware that now this is, we know of at least this is the third leak in the roof that we don't know of. It exists. So surely what I'm trying to avoid is us redoing the roof. You know, we'll try to patch it. This summer, we'll get someone up there and see if we can look at it and see if we can figure it out. We got a spot there, we got a spot there, we got a spot out back. And you know, it's like everything else in the building. It's getting tired. We don't maintain it for twenty years. Supply rubber roof, it's gonna dry out. Well, we'll attempt to do something to Band-Aid it and hopefully move through the process. Quickly and efficiently to figure out what we're going to do.
Excellent. Thank you. So more to come on the roof. A little more investigation and up number four on new business is the historic commission ordinance review. This was put on, I do believe, at Council Benahan's request. Yeah? We're slightly pleased.
Yeah, you'd have to put it on this painting.
We have received some correspondence from a local resident with some. Issues with this. And I would request that the town clerk puts that with the meeting minutes. I'm not going to go into reading it. It is quite lengthy, but if we could include that. I think we need to have a workshop realistically with the council to look at this. My only question is, I would like to request the town manager. To consult legal and find out where we stand as far as the council in reviewing this. Is this the planning board? Is it us who who has say? And if we could do that before we meet in a workshop, so we have direction. Because it does. It does reach back to the building codes and reach backs to ordinances, which is the planning board, but we appoint the historic district commission. So I just want to make sure we have a clear line before we go. If that's okay with. Everybody.
If we're to have a workshop, could we also potentially invite somebody from the historic district commission for clarification of questions?
Yes, we should have them and members of the planning board and sit down and go over it. I'd like to suggest sometime in June, because we're pretty booked through April, May's town meeting. We can look forward. We won't set a date today or we can wait. Why don't we wait till Tim gets us an answer from legal and at the next meeting we'll set a date when Mallory's here also?
Just just for, you know, my mindset for, I think, if I remember my mindset back and was just knowing that. This was a lot bigger than I ever thought it was, you know, and and I want to make sure where we're. For the council's appointing people that we know what in in tax and stuff. And I think that your call and a workshop is exactly would be really good for education for us. Committee and everybody.
Agree and knowing and knowing what standing we have. So if somebody comes to us with an issue. Whether we can actually move on it or we have to work back back down to the planning board or back up to us. I think that clarity is needed. I've appointed people to it, but I don't think we've ever had an issue with the ten years I've been here. With a historic district issue. So I'd just like, thank you, Tim.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
For a question. Is there a specific section of the ordinance that one of any of the councils particularly looking at that I can, that I need to address with? If it's in reference to. The email that you've got. Then that that'll be specific question to the attorney of, because that obviously involves buildings. And and codes, right? So that piece would be, I'd have to find out where that planning board sits in on that as well. But are there any other sections that you, were there something specific, Councilmen, and you were looking at that you wanted? Researched or that I think we can do something more for you for?
I don't have it right here now. I, in my head, I felt when I read through this before and I couldn't find it for this meeting. I felt like the historic district committee was given the power in this ordinance to change ordinances. And. I may have misread it or, you know, because it's legal stuff. So I I may have misread that. I can look into it and let you know if that was. If I read it wrong or whatnot, but that was what my mindset was is that. I felt like the historic district was given a lot more leeway than we thought they were. So I can look into that. And point that out or just let you know that I was, I misread it and it's wrong.
Yeah.
But that was, that was one of the things that I probably wanted to make sure we were.
I, 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 I read it. Jeff, I didn't see that in here. And I, I haven't seen anywhere in the code. It said the only one, no matter what they do, they were still, the only one who has the authority to change and it's fine in final view of the council.
Right, right.
So but I didn't, I did not see that in here, but I certainly will read it again and look. And but I will also ask that question of legal counsel at the same time and talking about. The direction of if we change it, where does it go for us and who gets it?
And I think also just one of the things ongoing is training. I think that's one of the things that we need to make sure that the, you know, either the Conservation Commission and the historic. Committee, district committee, making sure that they're having the training that they need. And especially the historic district committee. Where they can make ordinance changes potentially and definitely they can make suggestions. And they're dealing with people's property and whatnot. We need to make sure that they're taking proper notes, following proper. Rules and have the the knowledge to do so. That would be just something that I think would be good to make sure is happening. But other than that. I don't have anything else.
Put that back on the agenda for our next meeting.
I can just speak because I live in the historic district. So you have to do the. Yeah, Brett Croft, thirty four Liberty Street. So just one thing to look at in the ordinances. I think at the time when the ordinances were set, there was property or district zones that were drawn out. And then property lots that were listed. And then over time, property lots get split out. So someone gets split off a lot from their property, but I don't think the ordinances were actually updated to include new properties. So someone gets split off a lot from their property, but I don't think the ordinances were actually updated to include new properties. And whether or not that's up to the historic district about how they want to make a decision about new properties that get split off. But it would just be good to have clarification as a homeowner in the district. Um, as far as how properties are evaluated, whether or not they lie in the district, whether it's a. District boundary or a specific lot listing.
Specific, specific house or the the we actually encompasses all the area.
Yeah, so that'd be helpful to know. Thanks.
Uh, any other discussions from the public on this? Any other discussion from the cast?
Your vice chairman, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so are you going to be forwarding me that email that you would like put into the minutes?
Yes, yes.
And is there any feeling that I should not add or?
I will, I'll reread it again tonight and forward it to you. Alright, that concludes new business for the evening. Now we're up to the town manager and assistant town manager report.
Uh, on the highway, thorough roads has been already claimed. April fourth went to storm and they're doing the damage cleanup and we are. Working right now to file claims with FEMA, see if we, that'll be another disaster storm. Uh, work is being done on the softball field. We ended up getting in two more loads of filler. The lot that we took out more than we thought till we end up, not not in issue to get that done. Capacity potholes and rain gutters were installed at the community center to avoid future flooding inside the building. Police tamened eight arrests, um. Four accidents, fifty traffic stops, I'll got a rest. Uh, one of those arrests involved a significant amount of drugs in a vehicle that they stopped on two thirty six. Um, that was being searched for by another area agency around us, uh, they were pulled over. And at that particular point, they arrested three people with warrants, outstanding felony warrants for drug. Paraphernalia, drug trafficking, when they searched the cavity, seized a fair amount of penile and other. Serious drugs, but they ended up calling in main DA and having, so, you know. People don't take it serious, very much. Right in front of your house, yeah. Fifteen traffic stops. Uh, their building, their garage and elevator and all have all been repaired are back up and running. Lieutenant Stevens is gonna be taking the FEMA ICS three hundred, four hundred leadership training next week in Wells. SRO McFodder's taking criticals and training this week. Sergeant Lawrence, Sergeant Pelkey perform with community service. Um, that is basically what had happened. They had a car accident. Um, over the weekend and it left the family of five stranded with no ride available available. They were trying to get to Westbrook. And they couldn't, they had no way to get there. They called Uber. There was no way for them to take all their luggage. It was a guy to be told. Um, so they called in office of the soil. He came in, uh, they they made a phone call to Nick. They went and got the town suburban, the fire department used to have, we use public works now. They loaded them in that and they drove in, old PD drove people to Westbrook, their hotel where they were gonna stay. So. Want to know about customer service, that's customer service and bone beyond.
So that's what a small town's all about.
We have three thousand people though.
Listen, I'm still gonna call the small town.
Officer Green is being called into military again for a six-week training. They'll be gone in six weeks. The fire department's had seventeen calls in the last two weeks, a hundred and sixty-nine get a date. Uh, the chief attended a training workshop in York County EMA last week with all the other fire chiefs in York County. Roundtable, he said it was good information and um he came back today and said. He was very, very much appreciative of A, the town council, B, the town's administration on how we run and operate the town. And he said, listen to some of these other towns, what nightmare they had. So he was very pleased with that. Uh, firefighter trained on forestry firefighting with a controlled grass burn at the lakes. And that was actually interrupted by a real brush fire at the end of follow line road off Air Force Road. Uh, the telephone, the internet upgraded, community center has been completed. Uh, Nick did a lot of the work himself in-house and saved the town a ton of money because that was his whole job expertise. The firefighter association has donated thirty-five thousand dollars to the town to buy, we didn't ask what fire fire department did. They are buying a whole brand new set of e-hydraulic battery powered draws a life rescue tool system for the fire department. They have one set now and then they have an older set. They're gonna retire their older sets and now they'll have two battery powered draws a light units. And and the beauty behind that is the old system had a power pack that had twenty-five feet of hose. And you had to drag the power pack to the jaws and if the towel was way down over the bag, then you had to do. So with the with the with the battery operator ones, you don't just grab the unit, it goes on, sits on a charger in the truck all the time. They would have a brand new second set, which is gonna become their primary set, so. We'll have them on two sets of trucks in case there's two incidents, we can go to different spot and have two trucks and get there and deploy two sets of life saving tools. Thank you very much for the fire association. Code enforcement, twelve building permits, um. Up from up nineteen from this time last year. Uh, she issued three plumbing, three plumbing permits. One violation is currently active and she's had fifteen people in her office in the last two weeks. Planning is no applications in front of the planning board right now.
At the library, the annual fairy house project is coming up on May fourth. And a big thank you to Mallory for helping out, resnob the shelves at the library in the past couple weeks. And animal control officer Carol Harris will be doing a presentation at the library on May fifteenth on how to deal with nuisance wildlife that might be in your yard. Recreation, last week was school vacation and the community center was closed for maintenance. All of the floors were stripped, cleaned and waxed. Um, another new program that's gonna be starting on Monday, the twenty ninth is the first session of our new P V soccer session. And the uh class is actually full with many people waiting on a waitlist, so she, Nikki was pleasantly surprised with the new program. And she is in the process of also setting up interviews to fill the three camp counselor positions. The seniors this Wednesday, a group are going to Vermont. They're gonna stay overnight at the Fun Track Family Lodge, visiting Ben and Jerry's. Old Hollow Cider Mill, Rock of Age's quarry and King Arthur's Flower Bakery. Assessing, Verna is on vacation this week, but upon her return, she will be wrapping up the field and permit pickups and the data entry will be enacted out. The tax maps have been completed and the new G I S layer will be uploaded loaded soon on the website. And personal property declarations and Betty business equipment tax exemption applications have been sent out to all the businesses in town. Town clerk's office, Tyian has asked the state to do a free assessment of the safety of our building for elections and get their input. Tyian attended excise training class in Augusta on April eleventh. And Briella and Candace will be attending motor vehicle training on May seventh and May eighth. Transport station, as of this coming weekend, the transfer station is fully staffed. Yay! Um, a welder will be coming in this week as well to fix some broken wheels and some of the canisters that we have. And this past weekend, um, there was a lampshade along with other non-paper items found in recycling bin, paper bin, yeah. Economic development, the comp plan had a meeting last night. They are almost complete and the next step will be to go in front of the town council on the second meeting event. The next downtown revitalization public session will be held on May sixteen here at the town hall at six P M. And in my world, I have had ten business meetings in the last two weeks, twenty-eight staff meetings. We had letters that were mailed out to a hundred and eighty-one taxpayers who have outstanding tax bills for the March thirty-first. Um, twenty twenty-four taxes. If they remain unpleaded, a thirty to me thirty-day demand will be sent out certified mail on May seventh. And that gives them an additional thirty days to pay. Otherwise, things will be put on and those will be recorded at the registry of deeds on June eleventh. Dawn and I finished the annual report last week and we should have the annual reports delivered next week and be ready for the public. The January storms, the flooding storms have been declared federal disaster. I am working with Jay and Nick to get information on that. And we're gonna be working with a liaison from FEMA. Today, we met with York County Emergency Management to talk about the April fourth storm, to see if there is enough damage in York County. We believe that there's gonna be, and I think that's why they're asking us for all of the documentation, of payroll law, all the documentation, all the invoices, estimates, everything. Have to be into them by this Friday. So that um was kind of a big surprise to us this morning. We usually don't ask for that much detail that quickly. Um, but we're on it and we won't miss that. Linda and I continue to meet with A D P to implement the new payroll software. And as a reminder, the Spirit of America Award for the recipient for twenty twenty-four, which is not given out till twenty twenty-five. Must be submitted for the end of June. So we'll be looking for your nomination on the second meeting event. One other story I'd like to share is the code enforcement office was contacted by Paul Brunel. And they asked what you would have to do to start up a lemonade stand business in town South of Brooklyn. And this is for the junior achievement program at Central School. So Jenny and her staff put together, they took off the town seal, they put little lemonade stands in where our town seal is, made them all kind of all mock forms. To fill out for a standard home occupation application and a special use permit that they could have in class. And she thought a thank you note, um, and said that the. Teacher, uh, Mrs. Green was so appreciative of the time and effort that her staff went through. Um, to give that to her class and it made the junior achievement program extra special this year. Yeah, shout out to them. Community service again.
Absolutely. So on the mind, obviously I had a busy twenty-nine staff meeting, that was before I went on vacation last week, I came back from vacation. Um, I did. The T W A did have to pull me on the plane to come back, maybe. You gotta go on a plane, you gotta have that number. Um, I've been dealing with two personnel issues. Two legal issues, but do this report on one of the legal issues, but I can't tell you the the details outside of executive session. I can tell you come, we reached a tentative settlement, I'm waiting to hear back from. It has to go in front of the judge and he'll just stamp it and then. You know, be in court, it'll be a saving grace. Um, we're starting weekly or bi-weekly meeting, we'll point associates, that's gonna be tomorrow. Cause they're, what they determined that me and Peter, there's a whole list of questions about the building and stuff and wouldn't. This and that and when was this bill, what's here? So we're just gonna meet weekly and do a lot of that, fill in the blank stuff. Um, which we never did with um. Ford City, we didn't have any of those stuff and everything. So that tells me that they've actually been in. Looking in the crevices, looking up, and they wanna know what this is and where does this go, what's, how is this tied into that, and when was this done, so. They're 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 they're, the people, the original electricians and the. The heating unit people, they they are doing a true, I think what you guys wanted, a real true deep assessment of each of their systems. And not just, oh yeah, okay, so. Um, finalizing the banquet with Dawn, I've been doing a lot of work for Dawn, been doing a lot of work for that, and I want to shout out. To Dawn, uh, she's really, last three months put a lot of effort into that, so we can thank the employees, staff. Transfer station, we had sent out fourteen warning letters to citizens in the last two weeks, and I will continue to send them out. And if they continue to do that, they can be fined anywhere from fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars. And we can take their privileges in transfer station away, up to thirty days and beyond thirty days, I can ask you to remove their privileges perfectly. So I hope people smile now because it's getting to be annoying that they keep doing this stuff. It's costing us. About three hundred and fifty to three hundred and ninety dollars to pick a load up out of Auburn. Because it's contaminated and to have them pass out a haul down to Westbrook to destroy it down there. It just feeds. You know, and I had a guy in here, I go with him the other day, and he said they closed the place. I said, that's not gonna solve your problem, a lot of stuff on the side of the road. You know, people could have stopped, we've got to pay attention, the rule's the rule. So hopefully with full staffing, hopefully we can control that better. And that's, you know, so that's kind of what we're hoping to keep up with. Um, I've had, we've gotten six um customer survey reviews that were good. All for code enforcement. Uh, Jen, the assistant town manager, reached out to Stephanie Cowler. For an update on the traffic project, the the traffic lights. So she wrote to Stephanie, who is the lead for uh CAC. Stephanie wrote to Brad, who's our representative at D O T. She said, I want to check in with you about South Burke. Um, for a project, as you know, CAC funded the design for this project, I understand a kickoff meeting. Maybe scheduled soon, could we get together for a quick check-in and discuss a proposal project schedule? And Brad Paul, AP Highway Program Manager of MA G O T, Brad replied, hi Stephanie. We're awaiting the S T I P, and I don't know what that is, approval for the kickoff. Typically, we get the approval sometime in May. Doug Booms will be the project manager for this project. Once we're able to kick off, we begin gathering existing conditions, data, survey, environmental information, right away, utilities, etc. We then schedule an inter, an initial team meeting about three to four months after the kickoff, review information and start them in. The initial design. We'll keep you in the loop as things progress, that's Brad. So that's moving along. We're just waiting for this piece to hit the the STIP, S T I P approval. And then they'll start the kickoff in May, and I anticipate that from September, we'll be sitting down with MA D O T, CAC. And us to do, look at the initial design phase, where the project is underway. And that's all I have, Mr. White.
Uh, I have one question, purely for personal reasons. Knowing the water level and whatnot, but we have a date on when Hoover Sands might be worked. They assume we're waiting for the water and everything else to get out before we can get there, so.
Yeah, okay, well, we don't, it's gonna be. I think, you know, Jay said it's gonna stop, yeah, it's gonna stop raining, it's gonna dry, and you're gonna get the water level, what's he gonna do, because they're gonna get out and. And so the next, I know one of the things that they talked about is, um, because we're digging on the water's edge, it's finished getting. I think Jay got the E P burns. Uh, but at some point, the E P will have to come out and do a preview of it when he gets ready to dig. And then tell Jay, tell us what we're gonna do and I don't have an exact.
Okay, but I just, I guess, I think it's just gonna be as low as.
You know. Low as possible.
September.
I I would be after it, we're going if it doesn't stop, you know, the downpours and so forth.
Okay, I just, I was asked and I thought I would just ask.
I I. I don't, Jay, Jay's got it on his list. He said, as soon as the water gets to a certain level, it it's off, two times you do it, he's gonna move on. He ain't gonna wait.
So he's got all the projects he's gonna do. Uh, yeah, I think you want, that works, thank you. Anybody else have questions for the town manager? Alright, here we're done. We'll move on to council member comments. I'll stay with going to the left first, Jeff.
Oh, good job and welcome back.
We didn't know you didn't want to come back. Melissa.
Nothing this evening.
Jessica.
I am very much appreciating South Burke Fire Department's um posting of the fire conditions for the day. I think it's really important. Just want to remind citizens that as of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, all recreational fires. Larger than three feet high and three feet in diameter require for permit and to check the fire conditions, um, you know, don't burn.
Thank you. There was a major fire right now in the classroom. It started at, by the time you get there, from the time they get the call. Behind the school, by the time, by the time they arrived in three minutes, it was spread to five acres. And it's now at about fifteen and growing, main fire service is there with a helicopter and trying to control houses, earning a journey. This time of year, with the wind we have like today, it'll go fast.
It's surprising with the amount of rain we have, how dry it is on the woods, it's very much so.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that. And just a reminder for the community, Spraw, Bop, Bop, Little League, um, they are holding their opening ceremony since weekend. As is Mark, Mark with baseball. So if you are on wheel drive, please be sure to mind your speed and look for pedestrians. I do know in the past that we had a pedestrian crossing thing in the crosswalk, so if there's. The ability to find it out of a shed, we very much appreciate it.
Um, I have nothing other than Monday the twenty-ninth and this Saturday. Turkey season opens in the state of Maine and down here, so if anybody hears gunshots in the woods, because turkey season has officially opened. Um, with that.
Motion to adjourn. Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, appearing no discussion, Jeff. Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
concludes the meeting. Thank you all for coming.